All to order, the Planning Commission Citizens Advisory Committee for the regular meeting of Monday, September 10th, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of our borders, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our first and foremost.
Thank you. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brymeier.
Here.
Commissioner Ken Wilder.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schrabin.
Here.
And Chair Barker.
Here, thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda as it's written?
Motion to approve it.
In a second. And discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. And do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, August 13th, our regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
And support?
Support.
And discussion. All in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Stand accepted. Public comments, there appears to be nobody here tonight, so we will dispense with that. Old business, residential zoning districts review updated. And I think, Andy, I think you wanted to take a look at the Chapter 15, the PUD Plan Unit Development, you want to go through that first?
Yeah, we can do the one first. So today, I submitted to you a couple of updates, so the residential zoning districts, if you recall, we went over that last month. We just kind of walked through a bunch of the proposed changes to the definitions, to the land uses, listed permitted, and special land uses, and the dimensional standards. You'll see, basically, all we did in this new version of this memo is took out all of the strike throughs, and we kept the highlights, so you can see what's new, and keep that in mind, we took out the rest of the stuff. And you'll also see, it didn't come through real well in the copy, so I've cleaned up a little bit, we had graphics for each of the districts now. So if you look on, starting on page, let's see, in the definitions, on page four of the report, we have a, we added a graphic that more clearly illustrates the lot line, was a front yard, was a side yard, and all that kind of stuff in zoning ordinance. This is primarily helpful for staff and the public. You guys typically don't need to, you know, parse this out in all that much detail, but I do on a surprisingly frequent basis. We're talking about principal front yards versus secondary front yards, what setback applies when, and that kind of thing. So we added a graphic here, so it's less confusing for residents when they're trying to figure that out. Similarly, on page, I'm going to kind of skip ahead a little bit here, pages six and seven is basically the same thing as you saw last month, I just cleaned up a little bit. On page eight, there's a graphic again that just illustrates the setbacks for the SR districts. So we kind of copied this, this format for graphics through each of the districts that show the building envelopes, that show the setbacks, lot boundaries, the minimum lot width, all of those kinds of things. So it's a little bit easier to understand, fully, like we say, oh, your, you know, your front yard has to be 30 feet or something, they understand what that means and how that relates to where they can build a house, and things of that nature. Similarly, on page 10, we have the graphic for the R2 district. On page 12, 13, we have one for the R2 district. So again, that's really the only change that we made to this residential districts chapter. We also have one on page 16 for the R3 district. And it's just to help illustrate the concepts and the setbacks. You find that people have a much easier time understanding pictures and reading through the text. So this, coupled with the other graphics, illustrate what the, you know, primary front yards and secondary front yards are, along with these graphics should help understand a little bit better, or help people understand a little bit better which, which regulations apply and why it's like that, and all that kind of stuff.
Andy, just a quick question or clarification, we've got one set here that has our agenda on it.
Yep.
And that one, that's the one that was last from August 9th, so that's, that's just that one, right?
Yep, and then the one.
The newer one is, takes out all strikes and does all of that, adds the graphics.
Yes.
So when we're going through this, we really won't need this, we will just need this, is that correct?
Yes, so moving forward to now, the one that we submitted council will probably have both, but when we turn this into an ordinance format, we'll take out the highlight and everything, and you'll just see what's going to be there.
What's actually there.
Yeah, but we left the highlights in just so you can kind of remember what.
I think the council preferred to have the highlights.
Yeah, I think we gave them both last time for parking and signs, and they, it was pretty easy for them to understand the changes.
Right.
I think that's what they said. Yep. So we look to you to do that, if that works okay for you.
Yep.
Are there any questions on the residential districts at this point, or additional comments, or anything on the graphics that we added?
I just have a question about setbacks, it's just a general, I haven't really thought about, but, so why is there, for the minimum side yard setback, there's a number here that says 20 foot total slash 8 foot minimum.
Yes.
And for all others, there's just a, a number that I would assume is a minimum.
Right. Side yards, we see that a lot, so what that means is that one side, each side yard has to be at least eight feet, but together, total, they have to be 20. So if one side is eight, the other side's got to be 12.
Okay.
Or it's 10 and 10, or it can both be 12 or 15 or whatever, but there has to be a minimum, and that's in there for, I believe that's a, that's a provision that helps with access lots, so like a fire truck or some other emergency vehicle's got to get between houses if you only have, like a, you know, three or a fire, you know, fairly narrow setback, it's hard to get through there. So if you have that, that 20 combined, and you have one side of the house, they can get through there pretty easily.
So you've got access to 317 or 218?
Well, it's going to be at least eight. So it's eight and 12 is your minimum, so, so you couldn't do like a 7 and 13.
The pre-existing things are fine.
Yes. Yeah, so pre-existing things would be, you know, what we call non-conforming, we talked about this a while back, so they would be allowed to continue moving forward now, like if that house was, you know, destroyed, burned down or something, 20, rebuilt it, go ahead and conform with the new standards, but moving forward, yes, that's something that would be allowed to, to continue, provided it was definitely to be lawful.
I don't, I don't think I've seen it either, is this something new, or no idea?
There are lots of ordinance that have those, I see quite a bit.
Okay, I just haven't seen it.
So my house is like probably three feet off the lot line, so a burn down, afternoon foundation, is that what you're saying?
It depends on the percentage and specific circumstances, but in most cases, if it's like more than 60 or 70 percent destroyed completely, then possibly, yes. And again, that's, that's a real common thing in zoning, where if there's a, if there's a major calamity, then, and there's a house or a structure of some sort that's non-conforming, whether it's a house or a, or a commercial business somewhere, if it's, if it gets destroyed, and it gets rebuilt, then it has to be rebuilt in a manner that complies with the ordinance. So I think, I have to check ordinance, there, there might be a provision in there that allows for someone to appeal the counselors, or something like that, to, to get around that. But generally speaking, yes, you'd have to conform when you rebuild.
We're to keep one wall up. I can't do something, but don't burn that wall.
Are there any other questions? Now, this, this is the one here too, these residential districts are the ones where we will still have to have a public hearing, because this is the first we've seen this.
Well, we, we talked about it last month, but this is, yeah, yes. So as far as scheduling yet, that's up to the commission, if you have to, next one, we could turn around an ordinance in time and notice it. If you want to look at this more closely and digest it, since you did only get it today, that's fine too, I mean, we're not in a huge rush to, you know, run through this every night, or whatever, that's up to you.
Commissioners, what's, what's your take on if you want to schedule a public hearing for October 8th meeting on the residential districts?
Yeah, I think so.
Here. I don't see any overriding reason to not do it.
Right.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and schedule that then, so this will be at the October 8th, I think, public hearing. Correct?
Yes.
These are all the residential districts only?
Yes.
Correct, so we still have not done residential districts, we haven't done the commercial districts, so there's just a few more districts to go.
Right.
Just double checking the date here, but that's all.
Yep.
If you're good with that, we'll move on to the next one, so this is a little out of order, we had talked originally about moving on to the commercial districts, but instead, I also sent today a quick rework of the PUD Plan Unit Development District. And did that because there is some, some interest in some development in the city
that we are interested in, you know, accommodating, I guess, and we believe that we'd like to handle this as by looking at our Plan Unit Development District standards, because I think in this particular instance, it'll, it'll work the best. So I've gone through this Chapter 15 and made some initial edits that I think can make it overall workable. And so to kind of provide some background here on what a PUD is, I know you guys probably hear that term a lot, but I don't know, I don't even have anyone really interested in reading about PUDs just for leisure. But what a Plan Unit Development is, is it's a mechanism in zoning that allows for flexibility in development. So what, a lot of times, what we see in all kinds of development is when you apply just a, if you develop a piece of property, you apply an R1 or R2 or Commercial Zoning District regulation, you get kind of a repetitive pattern. So you have houses of a similar size and a similar style, built on a lot of the same size, on the same type of street, with, with, with the same setback, and this pattern just continues on and on and on and on. There are a number of instances all over the, just in, just in this area, in, you know, within the, you know, within the Lowell area, or within New West Michigan generally, where there are properties that don't lend themselves well to having the entire thing just completely developed. There are lakes, there are wetlands, there are rivers, there are important things that you want to preserve, and so the PUD allows for a lot of deviation of those underlying zoning requirements. So instead of hypothetically, let's say you have one acre minimum lot, but there's all this cool stuff that you want to preserve, you could allow the developer, for example, to build smaller lots than what you would normally permit, as long as they preserve this other stuff that you want them to preserve, or if they, you know, have a trail network going through there, or something like that. In, in the city's case, it might be more, it might be more relevant to say that there could be a piece of property in the city, like a block. Let's say somebody bought a block that didn't have much on it, or there, maybe there was one building, they wanted to work around that building, but they couldn't do what they wanted to do using the conventional zoning district requirements. So in a PUD, the city can waive and vary and modify a lot of that stuff, as long as they go forward with this plan, it would be specifically approved by both the planning commission and the city council. So it's, it's a way for the city to allow for kind of innovation and interesting, non-traditional types of, of development. A lot of PUDs also allow for varying land uses, so if there's property that's zoned R1 or R2, or if it's in a commercial zone, but, but there's a building that says, I want to do mixed use projects, I'll find this parcel, we could zone it to mixed use, that might work, or we could allow for a PUD, which could allow for those additional land uses, and also the variation of setbacks of parking, density, a lot coverage, and that kind of thing. So it's really a, a tool to allow for innovative design and flexibility in, in standards. So.
Andy, do we have currently in Lowell any PUDs?
Yes, you have one.
Where is it?
It's, uh.
Yeah, the Highland Hills, that was called?
Highlands.
Yeah, so just go right on the east side of town.
That's a PUD.
Okay.
That's a great example of why you'd do that. So that's a pillie property, and so what they've done is, you can see just looking on the map there, or looking on the zoning map, most likely under the conventional zoning when that was done, the only way to fit that number of lots on that property would just be to kind of slice up the whole thing into individual parcels of, of, of the same size, and have nothing preserved, and then develop that way. But that's a steep property getting back there, and it's a little tricky to develop on a conventional basis, so the city permitted a PUD in that case, which allows for the smaller lots. All that stuff around it is, is preserved as open space, that's something that wouldn't necessarily have been feasible just under the conventional zoning ordinance standards. So that's an example of a PUD and why you do that.
And again, we're, in essence, if they have, if somebody does get a PUD, they, in essence, have their own zoning district, and it is a completely different zoning district.
In this case, yes, yes. So in this, in this, in this case, what would happen if anyone applied for a PUD in the city and it was approved, is by city council's approval, the property would be rezoned to PUD, and the site plan that they submitted with their PUD application would become part and parcel of that zoning. So yes, it's zoned to PUD, but that doesn't mean they can do anything, it means that whatever they've proposed and you have approved is what's locked in and zoned to, for that and only that.
Right.
And you can't change that unless you come back and go through the, and go through the process again. So to kind of walk through these, these sections for you here in Chapter 15, in Section 15.01, we didn't make any changes, other than a few comments included. In Section 15.02, there are some standards in here that I either took out, like in, in the first one, because a lot of those generally are, don't apply to cities, though that's kind of a township-oriented standard to me, preserving large stands of trees and open spaces and things like that. The change I made on, with that number two, instead of areas of property, it's just a wordsmithing thing that I prefer, no changes in three, four, or five. On Page two, under qualifying condition, there are a couple of things here that, again, didn't feel like it felt right for the city, so under subsection B, what's now, or what was subsection two, where it says the property which is the subject of the PUD must be a minimum of five acres, I took that out, because there are opportunities in the, in the city, I think, to develop some kind of a PUD on property that is less than five acres in the area. Under, under, under B, what is now B, B number two, I added a new subsection D, so again, this is more of a, something to tailor this more towards what the city might experience. So under Section B2, it says to be considered as a PUD, the proposed development must fulfill at least one of the following. Contains two or more separate interstate uses, for example, single and multifamily dwellings, and I'm adding mixed land uses, et cetera. Item B, the PUD cites it as significant natural features, that it covers at least 25 percent of the land area. C, the PUD is act to preserve in perpetuity at least 60 percent of the total lot area of the site, and then D, this is something that I'm adding, because again, I think it's relevant to what any small city might experience, is that the PUD constitutes a significant redevelopment of an unutilized or vacant property where conventional development may not be feasible. So if there's a site that could be redeveloped in the city, we want to have options available for that person to pursue a reasonable redevelopment of the site. That's not to say that the city is just going to, you know, sign a blank checkover and say, do whatever you want, it still has to be approved by the planning commission, the city council, within the standards of doing so in a minute here. But I think this is important, because, you know, where, where there is some redevelopment, and there's some redevelopment of sites going on, this allows for additional flexibility for the redevelopment of those parcels. Questions so far?
Would there be any reason why we would want to have a minimum, not necessarily acreage, but a minimum amount of land use, or is that limiting what we're trying to do as a city?
Um, you could, I mean, if you're to reduce, I mean, if you're to keep some minimum in there, though, the number that I would see Jack to go down to is so small that it probably wouldn't be worth it anymore, so we could do a minimum of one acres or two acres or something like that, but I don't, I don't know what that accomplishes in this context. Just. Sure, no, yeah, that's a good question. This, that, that number that you see, that five acres or 10 acres, sometimes 20 acres here in a township, I see that a lot.
Yeah.
And sometimes, especially in a city where you don't have 20 and 40, 80 acre parcels just laying around for people to develop, that's, you know, I question why we need that in there.
I'm looking at the, the map there, and thinking, about the river, riverbeds or the riverbanks, and is this, this be a good use of a PUD, wouldn't it, to be in that general area? Is this kind of what would be an application? I'm trying to think of an application where, besides the development.
Sure.
Someone would want to come in and say, okay, I want to put condos along the river, down that fairgrounds, I'd say.
Yeah, I mean, if, now, that means, a lot of the properties really close to the river here have floodplain issues that considerably limit what you could do there, but development on parcels like those could be an option. Any parcel that has, you know, a creek, or wetland, or significant stands of trees on it, could be useful. Redevelopment of a site somewhere in the, in the downtown core, you know, if there's a block or a part of, you know, a larger parcel, relatively larger parcel, you know, downtown, near downtown, east side, west side, that someone said, you know what, I don't want to do what's, what the underlying zoning allows, because that doesn't work for whatever reason, I want to do something totally different, but maybe it's a partial rehab building, or maybe it's starting over with an empty site, but you want to put the design completely different from what would ordinarily be required under the zoning ordinance, this gives it that kind of flexibility.
Right.
Thank you.
In Section 15.03, this reviews the application procedure, and I'm probably going to beat this part up a little bit, moving forward, but essentially, this just has an application to the planning commission, there would be a public hearing, the planning commission would make the recommendation to council who would have the final authority to adopt it. The, the, both, the planning commission, if you want, and the city council would be required to hold a public hearing on a PUD. And as you mentioned, Bruce, under subsection E here on page three, that I added approval of a PUD, performed through this chapter, so it constitutes an amendment to the city of local zoning map. So that's, that's the part where we're rezoning to, to PUD, and that's what triggers the need for a planning, I'm sorry, for a city council public hearing, there's a, there's some case law that requires that. So we'll update that process a little bit, but, so essentially, once the, the property is zoned, PUD, then they can proceed with a basic site plan review of their project, and if they need a kind of road approval, and if they need to go through a type of maybe a plating process on that part, they would do that.
So in essence.
Subsection went to the PUD rezone.
I was going to say, so they have to have the PUD first, and then if, if somebody got a PUD, or whatever plan that they're kind of looking at, then, then they would have to go through an entire site plan as well.
Correct.
Using the PUD rule?
Yes, because absent the PUD rezoning, you look at the site plan promptly and say, no, because this doesn't comply with whatever part of the zoning ordinance, so they need the flexibility within the PUD to, to allow that. Now, when they submit the application for, for PUD, they're going to tell you what they're doing anyway, so you're going to know. And some of them might even, you know, have kind of a concurrent review process, where you're looking at a plan, or a condominium, or a site plan, and at the same time, if they want to do that, or you can have the PUD part track ahead a little bit of the site plan, just so they have a more predictable process, that part is up to the applicant a little bit. And also, you know, the speed at which you guys want to process these things, you don't have to do it at their speed if you don't want to.
Correct.
But if it's, if it's possible, and, and, and if it makes sense, then, you know, the city could certainly do that.
Who, who makes the rules for the PUD?
The applicant proposes what they want, and then the city can accept or not accept what they propose. So if they commit with a plan that has just what you feel is way too much density, or the wrong kind of land uses, or it's usually less poorly designed for some reason, during that review process with the PUD, as a planning commission, you can say, no, this is not going to work, you need to come back with something else, and give them that PUD back, and say, refuse to take your suggestion, and even if like a man is denied.
So they, they come in, we have problem with ordinance, this is what we're proposing under the PUD that we applied for, we'd like to do this.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Section 15.04, basis of determination, so this section sets forth what criteria you use to make your, your decision. You'll see under item A, the former number one, general standards for special land use in Section 7238. I, I took that out, not because I don't like the standards, but because I think it's confusing, because when I first read that, I thought that we also had to apply the special land use preview process for a PUD, which is a fine thing to do, but you don't need to do that in, in addition to a rezoning to a PUD, it's kind of one or the other. So I took that out, and I'm going to add some standards for a PUD review in here to, to look at going forward.
I'm, I'm assuming when you add those, that you would also be looking at 7238?
There would be similar standards, yes, but it, you know, some, some of the criteria will, will be very similar, like, you know, compatibility with a master plan, and effects on adjacent properties, and neighborhoods, and things like that. But I do.
Those are pretty generous.
Yes, and, but I don't want to specifically reference in something from a special land use process, because it maybe makes it too difficult. And then, in addition to whatever standards we, we add here, we'll also have to look at the standards for site plan review, which you guys should be familiar with, because we go through them all once a month, and other standards of, of this chapter and the other zoning ordinance. So, you know, because someone gets it, if someone gets a PUD, that doesn't mean that they're excused from, oh, you know, locations of, you know, it, it, it doesn't mean that they don't have a landscape, or they don't have to provide any good parking or something like that, you can still go through and apply standards elsewhere in the ordinance, and hold up to that if you want to. And as a matter of process, the applicant should, then, they should tell you what standards they're looking to have modified or vary during the application. And 1504B just says that the city council may impose conditions with the approval of a, of a PUD, which is a very common thing to do, so they'll say, yes, we will approve this with the following conditions. A lot of them will be some sort of operational conditions, similar to what we do with special land uses a lot, so it could be, you know, if, if, if there's a business as part of that PUD, they could say, okay, well, this business is going to be your PUD, that's a house of operation of such and such, or it only occupies a number of square feet or whatever, something like that. In Section 15.05, there are no questions on that section. This section sets out what uses would be permitted in a, in a PUD. And this one, we propose to change pretty significantly. So all that was in here before said that in a PUD, you could only do single family dwellings, two family dwellings, all the points, multi-family dwellings, all the up to a point, so for two family, you could only do up to 20 percent of your PUD, could be two family, not more than 30 percent could be multifamily. And then you could also allow uses permitted by right in the C1 neighborhood business district, which is a, a district that is in the ordinance, but is not napping, there aren't any properties in the city zone, C1, or C2 and C3, but not C1. So I am proposing to simplify this a little bit, with that, it's, it's simplified yet, so every property where someone would come in and ask for a PUD, now, it's already have an existing or underlying zoning district, so it could be R1, R2, R3, mixed use, C2. So if it's permitted by right in that district now, it would be permitted within a PUD in that location. Similarly, under number two, if it's something that's indicated in, in the master plan as a type of development that we want on this property, we would also allow that in a PUD. So the master plan talks about, you know, different types of land uses and different types of designs, so residential or office or retail, for example, you know, certain types of housing designs, neighborhood designs, if it's consistent with those underlying principles of the master plan for that location, or for that designation on the master plan map, we would also consider that and possibly allow it within a PUD. Number three, residential, commercial, and public uses, which are determined to be compatible with existing and adjacent uses, may be combined, so if you have a piece of property and want to have some mixed use development with a public feature, a park, or a plaza, or whatever, those things could be combined as a, as a single development, and that can be permitted within a PUD. And then number four, which I was talking about before, only those uses of. And then number four, which I was talking about before, only those uses approved for that PUD district shall be permitted thereafter. So if somebody comes in with a PUD with a certain number of residential units and a couple other, you know, commercial or multi-family land uses, they can't just come and switch out and do something totally different, they'll come in back in here. So that's what I was getting at before, when we say that rezoning to PUD kind of locks in those land uses, that's what that means. Once you're approved, you're approved, but then you're locked into what you proposed.
Is there a mechanism for them to come back?
There will be, so there's not really now, but we'll have, similar to what we do for site plans and special uses, you know, kind of a major change versus minor change, or is minor change where you just wanna move a building ten feet, we'll just initially fatally look at it, but if it's more significant than that, if it's a completely different land use, or a significant increase in density, or new buildings, or something like that, you're gonna have to come through and go through the process a little bit.
Do we want to spell that out?
Yes, we will do that. At least we will do that. Other questions on that part? Continuing on section fifteen point oh five, so one of the things under subsection B here, I'm on page four towards the top, you know, this says that the maximum number of dwellings shall be, not be greater than whatever is the most restrictive zone district, I change that to the underlying district. So if there's a certain residential density that's prescribed by the existing residential district, we would want to keep that. So in other words, if it was zone R two, and that has a certain lot area of ten thousand square feet, the PUD doesn't just automatically let it increase the density tenfold on that property just because. So we still want them to maintain that underlying density that's permitted by that district, just how they arrange it and put it together could look and function differently from what you would ordinarily see without the PUD. Item C is unchanged, that talks about how you determine how much, how many residential units you could fit on a PUD, and how you do that map. Item D, again, is something I'm proposing to be totally delete, and that's the same thing. So this says that your setback in yard requirements shall comply with the most restrictive zone district in which the uses are permitted. So for one, I'm not quite sure what that means, and two, it doesn't make any sense to me. The point of the PUD is to allow for flexibility and all of those things. So if we want to go off of that flexibility, then we shouldn't automatically require the most restrictive thing that we can find in zoning ordinance. So I'm proposing that we take that out and replace it with the D right underneath it, that says that the city may allow for a PUD to modify applicable bulk areas setback density in other dimensional environments of the zoning ordinance. So again, that allows for the applicant to propose, if there's a required thirty-five foot setback, which we see a lot in R one and R two, and they're proposing a different type of neighborhood that maybe only has twenty-foot front yards, but the same number of units, and it looks good, and if you guys like it, then why not? We could approve that. Similarly, if they wanted to reduce the size of the parcels, make them a little bit narrower than what's ordinarily permitted, you could approve that too. Now, the underlying density would stay the same with everything else, actually, I should take that part out, but everything else would pretty much be flexible. So the idea with D is flexibility.
I think I would agree, of what I'm taking, the density, and just take it right out and get it out of there, because that's gonna be...
Yep, that's gonna add...
That's incinerary.
Yeah. And then, under item F, non-residential uses, a lot of PUDs, especially ones, you know, these ordinances like this that have been around for a while, they allow for some of these uses, but only on a very limited basis. Again, I think this language was written for purely single-family residential PUDs, which may be a couple of apartments, or duplexes, or something. I don't think it was intended for redevelopment or redevelopment in town and in more urban setting. I think this is kind of suburban-style ordinance, which in some areas fits in certain parts of the city, but in a lot of ways it doesn't, because you guys just don't have the room or the framework really to have that kind of a project. So this language here that says all non-residential uses shall occupy more than ten percent of the PUD project's developable area, I propose we just take that right out. If they want to allow for a significantly, majorly mixed-use project, that's fine, and if it's consistent with the master plan and meets those other standards, then you could approve it. If it's not, then you could say no. So this is gonna change it a little bit, where we're going to rely more heavily on the underlying district and the master plan to control land use than what's in here. The other items here under subsection A for this, they stay put, basically, so...
I have a question on three, yes. So merchandise or displays illegally shall be entirely within a closed building. That is if it's associated with a river, and you want to have kayaks sitting out there.
I mean, that seems kind of silly.
They have it in here.
Exactly.
I'd like a rework of that somehow. I don't, you know, if the intent here is to keep it orderly and all of that, that's one thing, but there are some businesses that that doesn't make any sense for. Or it could be, for that matter, it could be a restaurant with a table outside on a curb.
If you're by the river.
It just doesn't make any sense with our location here.
Yeah, we can, I have some ideas, I'm gonna change that. Any other questions or comments on this? The last item here, number four, again, we have a little iffy on this, to be honest with you, I haven't decided if I want to keep this or not, so, again, what we see a lot is language in ordinances that require that, before you build any non-residential buildings, they have to have at least seventy-five or eighty percent or whatever, your residential uses built, before you can build the non-residential stuff. And I think that's in here so, that if somebody really wants to build a commercial building where it doesn't fit, they could say, oh, yeah, well, we're gonna do this whole residential PUD, that they know is never gonna work, and then they just, we'll just put our commercial building up, and, oh, well, the residential part just doesn't work, so we just, so they can kind of back their way into a little bit of rezoning. That's why that's in here, and I get the logic, but don't know if it makes sense in all circumstances, so I'm gonna have to think through that one a little bit more, and either keep it, or, you know, propose some older language. Maybe if it's all integrated into the same building, it's less of an issue, but I think the idea here is to not have one commercial building with fifty vacant residential lots just sitting there, not doing anything. So I'm gonna force the developer to put forth a feasible plan for multiple uses if there aren't both.
Maybe some language that would say you can't stage it, or it can't be done in stages, or something along that line, unless there's a certain reason for it.
Yeah, I'll think about this one. I was looking at it today, and I couldn't decide if I wanted to get rid of it or not, so I left it for now. Fifteen point oh six relates to open space, so as I said, a lot of PUDs come around because there's a desire to build on smaller lots and have a larger amount of undeveloped open space on properties, and so if that is going to be proposed and allowed on fifteen point oh six, we would control the regulation for those open space, I don't really have any issues with any of them. You know, two, just, I'm on top of page five, number two requires it to be large enough to be usable, and sometimes we see these little skinny ten or fifteen foot wide perimeter strips around a development that they call open space, it really doesn't function as that. So we want to make sure that it's usable for everybody within the PUD. Three, they have to be able to maintain it and provide the city some assurance that they can do so in a workable plan. Four allows there to be either for active or passive recreation, so sometimes open space in a PUD is wetlands, and trees, and creeks, and lakes, and things like that, sometimes it's baseball fields, or playgrounds, or open greens, or plazas, or swimming pools, or whatever, so it can be either one, not boxing in one specific type of open space. Number five requires that that open space be de-restricted and set aside in perpetuity. Number six requires that all of the property owners within the PUD own that open space jointly, so typically, that takes the form of a homeowners association, or a kind of minimum association, where the owners all have an interest in that common element, as they call it, and everyone's equally responsible for maintaining it. Number seven pertains to maintenance, and number, so, and that's when it's going to start about, you know, active versus passive, I mean, we're not gonna make somebody know everything, obviously, if it's a natural area, but they do have to keep it clean, keep it maintained, as is reasonable, and they'll have to provide the city of evidence that they have a plan for doing that. And number eight is a standard that requires that to be some possible open space within a PUD be continuous and contiguous, so you don't want little titty-bitty pockets here and there that are totally disconnected and outplace or of any of your functions in the entire neighborhood. If that's the case, we want it to be a larger, connected, communal kind of gathering space, natural area, whatever it is, that really furthers the city's master plan and the objectives of the chapter. So that brings it to a conclusion. There are a few additional procedural things that I mentioned I want to add. This came up kind of last minute, so I apologize for getting this to you in a very rough form at the last minute. Typically, the way that I like to work on these things, but, you know, timing was, either was important, so, you know, I'd like to keep this moving along as much as is possible, and I guess, Bruce, if you have questions?
Commissioners, questions at all?
You said there was some possible interest, this is what stemmed, first started this?
Correct.
Can you tell us, or not?
I don't think so.
In the interest of time, however, can you, my first drawers would be to receive all of the updates and go over those at the October eighth meeting, not set a public hearing, go over those at that meeting. Does that conflict with your schedule horribly, or not? I mean, that would be my, my only concern is that we're holding a public hearing, we don't have...
Right, you know, you're holding a public hearing.
Exactly, yeah. That's a little disconcerting.
You know, I agree, I guess my suggestion would be to move at the pace that you are comfortable moving. I don't want you to adopt something that you're not comfortable with, obviously. You know, as far as what's happening, I can't say for sure how it would be received, but, you know, partly, like I said, I don't want you, if you're not comfortable just sending something on, or holding a hearing on something you're not entirely sure that you digested all of it, you know, I don't know that I would advocate for that.
The other possibility there would be to hold a special public hearing meeting later in October.
Yeah.
That would be another possibility, if that's what is absolutely necessary. Again, my preference would be to hold our session on October eighth with this, not as a public hearing, just going over this and finalizing it, scheduling a public hearing at the November meeting. But if that doesn't work, then you could let us know, have the October meeting, then we could go ahead and schedule something, if everybody's in agreement.
Yeah, so from my perspective, that's fine, we can give you the complete kind of marked up and final version for October, we'll have some more answers for you at that point.
Okay.
And then if we need to schedule a public hearing before your November meeting, we can do that. Otherwise, we can just continue on planning a meet on this in November.
Let's pass that on, Commissioners, is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
I know, I don't feel comfortable holding a public hearing.
See what we...
Exactly, yeah, I just don't feel comfortable doing that, so, at all, frankly, so. But I don't, in fairness too, I don't mind holding an extra public hearing late in October if we have, that seems to be reasonable, if anybody's looking at it in the long run, it shouldn't matter that one way, so, you know.
Okay.
All right. And did anybody have any questions on the residential zoning before we get too far here? So we're gonna do a public hearing on that, that whole session on October eighth at a regular meeting, okay? And then we also will do the planned unit development, our regular session, we'll talk about this and try to finalize what we want to do there. Not pass anything up, date, not do anything, all those options are on the table, but, you know, we need to take a look at it and go from there, so, okay? Andy, do you have anything else?
I don't think so.
Was there anything, see, that we needed to pull over?
I'm good.
Stay up, Sue, anything?
I have nothing further to report.
Okay. Kelly, you're first up.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All good?
Yeah, I'm not gonna upset the curve.
I'm good as well.
Tony?
And I'm doing fine, I just got back from UPA and getting ready to go to London, so we're in between, so we're doing good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
And supports?
Or?
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you.